Good evening, everyone. The time is now 5:03 and the Warwick Finance Committee is open. If I may have a motion for acceptance of the minutes for the meeting held on April 17th.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. We now move on to PCR 49-23. Item number one, 2023-395 Pontiac Village Park Site Improvements. Good evening. I got a message from the director not long ago, so please introduce yourself in the department with your title.
Dean Pimentel, Senior Planner.
Speak directly into the microphone.
Dean Pimentel, Senior Planner.
Thank you. And what's your title?
Senior Planner.
Thank you. Go ahead if you have information.
Yeah, so we had a mandatory pre-bid on March 28th. We had to rebid this project. We initially had put it out in fall of '22. The price came in around $490,000. We tried to negotiate with the one bidder at that time. We were unsuccessful to get the price down to something that we could afford and budget. So what we did was we had another pre-bid on March 28th. Again, 28 vendors were reached out to. Only one showed up to the pre-bid and they submitted a bid for $274,400, which is right around where the project is. We were able to get a majority of the wants that the public and the city want on that project. We did meet with the councilman and the village group and we came to a conclusion to accept those and come forward tonight, request for them to spend the money.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comment on the Pontiac Village site improvement? Councilman Gebhardt? Okay, thank you. Sorry, I thought I heard. Any further question, comment? Thank you. Councilman Sinapi.
Other than to urge support, no comments. They spent a long time on this.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Any further questions, comments from members of the council? Any further questions from members of the community, the public? Questions, comments from members of the public? Thank you. Bid 2023-439. GIS and Asset Management Services. Good evening. Name, title, and department, please.
Terry Di Petrello, Chief of the Water Division.
Thank you.
So the Water Division is requesting acceptance to notice engage in service with the Beta Group Engineering Services for GIS and Asset Management Services. The City of Warwick Water Division currently does not have a GIS system in place. Beta Group will specially locate 4,000 gate valves, 2,000 hydrants in associated GFLs. We currently serve 27,000 services, 314 miles of water main and 20 miles of transmission mains. GPS technology will generate a point feature to be utilized in a platform. I don't know if you're current up to date with GIS, but it's multi-layered with many pages, whether it's lead services or fire hydrants or what type of pipe we have in our system. We can also it tracks trends where the most water main breaks have been, so we can target an area. So say if natural liquid is going to come in and pave a road, we can identify that area where it needs some attention. So we're requesting $207,000 for a one-time fee. In the cover letter, it says that the beta will provide maintenance. We asked them to include in this bid a GIS system so we can maintain it ourselves, so they will train us. So once this service is provided, it's a one-time fee, they will train us and we can maintain it ourselves. So say a new service comes into town, a new building comes into town, we can take a GPS unit and go out there and enter into the system.
Thank you. Questions, comments from members of this committee? Councilman Gebhardt.
Thanks, Terry. First off, is this something we've looked at doing in the past or is this a new initiative?
This is a new initiative for the Water Division. I believe the planning department utilizes GIS, but there's nothing for water. So this is not only going to benefit the Water Department, but it's going to benefit the residents because it will be online. Any information they need to know about anything, it's there. Architects, engineers, it's going to streamline things for everybody.
And are the sewer, is a sewer system in GIS?
I can't speak for sewer. I'm not sure.
And just in terms of funding this, was this budgeted? And if so, just can you direct me?
We're taking this out of our 84-799 Capital Improvement Fund.
Capital improvements, okay. But in terms of the capital requests that were in the enterprise budget for water, was this incorporated? I'm just trying to.
Yes, it is. It is in our capital request.
Okay. That's all for me for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further comments, questions from members of this council? Comments, questions from members of the council? Comments, questions from members of the public? Comments, questions from members of the public? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is bid 2023-412. This is found on page 12. MDR, EDR, Service Solution. Good evening, Phil. Please identify name, title, and department.
Phil Carlucci, IT Director with the MIS Department for the city. This is a request to award bid 2023-412 for a Managed Detection and Response Endpoint Detection and Response MDR, EDR, Service Solution to Connectwise LLC in the amount of $94,374.72, covering a three-year period starting with approval and service implementation. This project is being paid for by a cybersecurity grant received by Warwick from the Rhode Island Secretary of State's office. In an industry that is constantly adapting to address an ever-changing threat landscape, services come in a lot of ways, shapes, and forms, as can be seen by the fact that for the bids we received on this, five-year projected costs ranged anywhere from $174,000 to close to $1 million. In this particular case, we chose the low bidder because it fit into our current cybersecurity program the best. It addresses and enhances some of the stuff we already have in place. And while Connectwise did offer a three-year option at a slightly reduced cost if we would commit upfront, we're requesting an estimated three-year spend that would cover up to a 10% annual increase in cost over the three years. While I'm confident that this solution is the correct fit for what we need now, I am not willing to commit contractually the city for the full three years upfront. This option lets us have the flexibility to reevaluate and negotiate that pricing, so this really turns into a worst-case scenario. And it does fit into the dollar cap that was awarded to us in that cybersecurity grant.
Thank you, Director. Questions from members of the committee? Cool. Sorry. Councilman Gebhardt? Councilman Gebhardt?
Just one. I noticed, thanks for the chat today on this one. Just looking at the grant, I think it was for $176,000, so that'll leave you some additional funds?
The $176,000 actually covered, this was to improve, this grant was based on improving the cybersecurity of our election system. Because the Board of Canvassers lives within our network, all things related to the network were available. We put in for three particular items. One of them was to provide the Board of Canvassers with hardened laptops requiring multi-factor authentication that they'll take out into the field. We have a dual firewall that is also on the docket tonight to replace our aging firewall situation. And then this was put in for $100,000 for the system itself.
Got it. All right. So I think you just answered my question. So the grant will cover two of the items on the docket tonight and then the additional, the firewall, the EDR, MDR, and then you're using some for?
The three laptops that were for the Board of Canvassers have already been purchased.
Great. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other further questions from members of the council? Questions from members of the council? Questions from members of the public? Questions from members of the public? Thank you. Next is, thank you, Phil. Next is bid 2024-031 Alpha Pipe Fittings and Valves. Please identify through department title and name again.
Terry Di Petrello, Chief of Water.
Thank you.
Water Division. So the Water Division received five bids submissions for pipe fitting and valves. Now recommending the vendors, Warwick Wind Water, Ferguson Waterworks, Don Holy and Sons, Linden Group, EJ Prescott. And we will order items submitted for this bid as needed. Items will be chosen based on the lowest qualified bidder. The current contract expires July 24, 2023, and the new contract will be July 25, 2023 through January 2024. Typically, this bid every year is a year bid. They're only extending bids for 180 days now. Warwick Wind Water, obviously is a war company, will do due diligence with that 7%, the legislation that this council has passed. But there's multiple items on this bid, quite a few items, and we will, as ordered, it will be the lowest bidder.
Thank you. Questions from members of this committee? Questions from members of the council? Councilman Lattisor.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Director. I don't have any questions. I just want to make a comment. This brings me back to a bid from the, one of the recent meetings where the council chose to award or give the opportunity to a department to purchase items from vendors that didn't bid, for whatever reason. And my reasonings that I stated on the record then are no different today. You are doing something similar in the fact that you want to award all the vendors because there's certain things you may need from certain vendors. What I would like to know from you is with Linden Group, who only bid certain items, are you or would you award them any bid, given the fact that you have four other vendors? Would you award Linden Group a bid on anything they did not bid on?
No, so this is going to go into the, my next thing on the docket. So we had five companies bid. Typically, we have 10 to a dozen companies bid on this item historically. But with the atmosphere today, the companies that bid, they're not bidding on a lot of different things. So if a company does not submit a bid on anything, if they don't submit a bid, they don't get awarded.
But that wasn't my question. My question was, they bid certain items. So, you know, I can understand where, if you're in a pinch or if they were the low bidder on that particular item, that you may want to use them for that particular item. My concern is that they're going to be contacted to purchase something that they haven't bid on. And I still believe the reason that some of these vendors are not bidding is because they don't want to disclose proprietary information. They don't want people to know, especially their competitors. They don't want them to know what those numbers are.
Yeah, so if somebody put, Councilman, if they did not bid on an item, we cannot award them that item.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any further questions, comments from members of this council? Questions, comments from members of the public? Questions, comments from members of the public? Thank you. The next item is bid 2024-031 Bravo Pipe Fitting and Valves. Additional vendors, Director, if you wouldn't mind just using the.
Sure. Terry Di Petrello, Chief of Water?
Thank you.
So the Water Division again is requesting acceptance to notice the recently submitted items from the previous bid, 2024-031A. The Water Division finds itself in unforeseen circumstances which vendors who normally bid do not submit bids based on supply availability and fluctuation of prices. This request will allow the Water Division to get business and allow us the purchasing authority to buy items submitted under bid 2024-031A when products not included on the bid 2024-031A is needed. We will perform due diligence and buy those items from the lowest responsible vendor listed below, which is Chloramine, Jack Ferrelli Company, Putnam Pipe Company, Radiance, Styles, and Tyce Sales, Inc.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions from members of this committee? Questions, comments from members of the council? Questions, comments from members of the council? Co- oh. Questions, comments from members of the public? Questions, comments from members of the public? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. So next, we're going to work, we're going to go to bid 2024 028 Hoxie School Basketball Courts. This is for over the 50,000 threshold, so we're going to look at that. Everyone should have the amendment. It's also on the website as the additional bid package. I'll give everyone a moment just to get coordinated. So this is bid 2024-028 Hoxie School Basketball Courts. Good evening, Kristy.
Good evening. Kristy Moretti, Public Works Business Manager. Excuse me. Public Works is requesting to award the bid for the improvement of the Hoxie School Basketball Courts to Narragansett Improvement Company in the amount of $71,092.50. to Narragansett Improvement Company in the amount of $71,092.50. This is ARPA expenditures as requested by Councilman McElroy.
Thank you. And this is part of the amounts that were, the ARPA funds that were committed to ward improvements per the residents of the wards?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Is there any recommendation or comment from Councilman McElroy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the Hoxie Basketball Court has been in deplorable condition. And this is something I felt was best utilizing the money for the school. I urge support of it.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Are there any questions, comments from members of this committee? Questions, comments from members of the council? Questions, comments from members of the council? Questions, comments from members of the public? Questions, comments from members of the public? Thank you. Thank you, Kristy. We are now at the section of the bid package where all items are under the $50,000 threshold. And what I will do is go to the members of the committee, members of the council, members of the public. If there is an item on this, or items on this bid package that you would like to have discussed, please identify the bid number. And if you have it in front of you, the item number, the bid number. And we'll work from there, starting with this committee. Councilman Foley?
Thank you. Item 29 on the list. 2023-455 Purchase of Eight Solar Speed Signs. That's all.
Thank you, Councilman. There any other items on this list from members of this committee? Oh, I apologize. That was bid, that was item number 29, so that would be... Give me one moment. 455. Hmm. Am I losing my mind or... The page number? There it is. It's found on page 195. It's part of the supplement. No, it's not. It's not part of the supplement. It's found on page 195. Oh, yes, it is. Yep.
195. You got it.
Thank you. I was looking at the very, very end. Are there any other items? Thank you. Give me one moment. I would like to discuss bid 2024-027. That is found on page 192. The title is ADA Improvements at Crosswalks. Thank you. I have a 2024-027 right here. That's, well, looks the same, but it's right here. It's on my bid package. 027. So for clarification, it's in the supplement. The additional is bid 2024-027. And in the packet, and where was it on your... Number 28. It's as 2024-029. In... It's, we're going to identify it as 029. So, thank you. For clarification to the public and to the council, in the amended, or the amended packet that we were given, the secondary additional packet, it is identified on page 195, but at the very top it says, on page 192. Thank you. At the very top, it says bid 2024-027. The real bid number, the actual bid number, is bid 2024-029. So this is found on page 192. Thank you. And it is bid 2024-029 ADA Improvements at Crosswalks. It is item number 28 in our bid package. I apologize about the confusion. Thank you. Anyone else from the committee wish to discuss? Thank you. Are there any items that members of the council would like to discuss? Councilman Lattesor?
Item 2023-444, found on page 69. Item 2022-286 Bravo, found on page 87.
If I could ask, within your, on your... Could you repeat the first one, please? 2023?
Sure. 2023-444.
Got it. Thank you.
That's on page 69. That's item number nine, at least on the sheets that I have anyhow.
It is. Thank you, sir.
Item number 12, 2022-286 Bravo, found on page 87.
Thank you.
Item number 13, Animal Shelter and Food, found on page 103.
Thank you.
And item 14, 2023-438, found on page 106.
Thank you. So we're on the same page, Councilman. You wanted to speak about item number nine, bid 2023-444, furnish and install HVAC controllers at animal shelter?
Correct.
Item 12, which is bid 2022-286 Bravo, City of Warwick gasoline, low sulfur fuel and low sulfur diesel fuel?
Yes.
Item 13, bid 2024-017, animal shelter, food and cat litter?
Correct.
And the final one was item 14, bid 2023-438, replace doors and additional posts at Thayer Arena?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other items members of this council would like to discuss? Are there any items on the bid package members of the public would like to discuss? Are there any items on the bid package members of the public would like to discuss? Thank you. In one moment, we'll get started. So we will start with bid 2023-444, furnish and install HVAC controllers at animal shelter. This is found on page 69. This is requested by Councilman Lattesor. Kristy, if you could identify your department, and then, Councilman, you'll have the floor.
Kristy Moretti, Public Works.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Hi, Kristy. Hi, Kristy.
Hello.
So this issue here with the controllers servicing, not communicating with the system, how long has this been going on?
That I don't know.
Does anybody know?
I would imagine the building maintenance supervisor, but he's not here this evening.
Has anyone reported this to the department before April 10?
I don't have that information.
Well, I guess I'm not going to get the answers on that. Move on to the next one.
Are there any further questions, comments from this committee? Further questions, comments from the council? Questions, comments from the public? Questions, comments from the public? Thank you. Next on the agenda is item number 12, bid 2022-286 Bravo, City of Warwick Districts at Gasoline, Low Sulfur Diesel and Ultra Low Sulfur Diesel Fuel. This is a request of a Councilman Lattesor. Chief, if you could identify yourself, and then I'll hand the floor over to the Councilman.
Jason Unbenhauer, Assistant Chief of the Fire Department.
Thank you. Chief, Councilman Lattesor?
Thank you, Chairman. Hi, Chief.
Good evening.
So Chief, these invoices... Do we normally pay these federal excise taxes and all these other taxes?
As far back as my recollection, we do pay the taxes and the excise taxes and the fees. Correct.
I thought the city was tax exempt.
I'm not a tax expert, so I don't know what our tax exemption, if it includes fuel, excise taxes. Most of the fees are spill fees and underground storage tank fees. I'm not sure if the excise taxes are exempt from that.
Well, I see Director Schaefer here. Would he be familiar with that?
The director stated from the audience that he's not aware of any exemption. Councilman?
Is legal counsel for the city here?
There is no one legal counsel here. Councilman?
So we don't know. At least from the directors that are here, we don't know if we're supposed to be paying this tax. I don't know if anyone else would disagree with me, but I was always under the impression that the city is tax exempt. Now, perhaps that means just sales tax, but I think it's something that we should know. And to be honest with you, I never paid attention to this tax before either or identified it in the invoices. Maybe I haven't seen an itemized invoice like this. But I think that should be a concern to everyone. You know, if we're going to be paying something that perhaps we shouldn't be paying. And in addition to that, these invoices are all past due. So now we're going to get hit with a 1.5% interest charge on invoices that are past due because they weren't presented or paid for timely. So that's a concern. The other concern that I have is the department is coming to us for an additional $13,522 for fuel, for overage, more than what they anticipated. And it says here in the position paper that the the price of diesel fuel has remained high for more than the past year, from $3.80 per gallon average last fiscal year to an average of $4.20 this fiscal year. But I'm looking at invoices here that tells me we're paying $3.21. We're paying $3.09. We're paying $2.98. We're paying $2.98, $3.06, $2.83. So I don't get it. The invoices that we have here are less than what the average cost of fuel was in 2022, last fiscal year I'm referring to. They're substantially less than what is being stated here for the current fiscal year. So obviously, we're using a lot more fuel than what has been budgeted or anticipated in terms of gallons. It's not because the price is higher now. The price is a lot less than it was in 2022 average and in 2023 fiscal year average. So Chief, does the department keep track of any non-emergency uses of fire department vehicles? Does the department track that? Is there any mileage records kept on the vehicles, all vehicles, that are used for things other than non-emergency runs, I'll call it?
Is your question, or do we separate out the mileage of the vehicles from responding to emergencies, separate from when they're returning from an emergency? Is that the question?
No, 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 no. My question is, when I talk about mileage for non-emergency runs, emergency runs are you get a call, we have a fire, we have a rescue, we need this, we need that. Somebody's, you know, boat is overturned. Emergency runs, non-emergency runs are items where a fire department vehicle is used to go on non-emergency runs, such as the grocery stores, such as the restaurants, et cetera, et cetera. Does the department keep track of that? Those mileage and how much fuel is being burned for non-emergency items?
The fire department keeps track of total mileage of the vehicles and the fuel usage of the vehicles. We do not separate the type of run, the type of mileage that those trucks are putting on them. No.
So the fire department has no idea how many miles nor how many gallons of fuel are being consumed at the cost of the taxpayers for non-emergency runs? You have no idea?
Not in real time, no.
Okay. So if we average out what you said is the average cost of fuel this year, I'm coming up with 3,159 gallons of fuel used more than apparently what you budgeted for. And that's at your number?
So the number that we budget is an estimated cost for the fuel for the entire fiscal year?
So how do you come up with that number, Chief? Do you, do you do an evaluation of, okay, so engine this, ladder that, rescue this, battalion chief vehicle, chief vehicle, deputy chief vehicle is going to be used for this, this, and this, and this, and we have X amount of miles that we anticipate? Or is it, well, based upon, you know, what we used last year, we're going to kind of use that going forward? My question is, how much fuel is being used at the cost of the taxpayers for the vehicles doing non-emergency runs? We don't know.
Councilman, it's not as easy as one would suspect. Fire department vehicles don't use miles per gallon like other most vehicles on the road. I could have a pumper sit at a fire, pumping a fire, having zero miles put on its odometer and run out of fuel with a full tank. It uses fuel when their generators are running. They use fuel when they're in pumping operations. When the aerial trucks are in operation, they're using fuel. When the rescues are sitting at scenes, when any of these trucks or vehicles are sitting at scenes, they're using fuel without mileage. When the rescues are sitting at the hospitals, there are climate control systems and everything need to be on, so they are sitting, using fuel without using any mileage. So just putting a miles to gallon for a piece of fire apparatus is, there's no way to calculate that. We go by mileage by historically how much fuel we use in the fire department in a year. And I take that number, I anticipate if we're going to use potentially more or less, but we typically go with what the average is over the last couple of years. And then we multiply that by the average cost of the fuel in the last fiscal year. This year's fiscal year, the average cost of fuel was higher than last fiscal year, hence, we're a little bit more than we anticipated because we thought the fuel prices would at least stabilize if not go down. But consequently, they've actually gone up over the average from the last fiscal year.
But not according to the invoices we have here?
You're looking at... You're looking at, you're looking at a one-month clip of an entire 12-month period or nine-month period.
I'm looking at the invoices that you're presenting to us for $13,522.31. That's what I'm looking at.
Correct.
And that goes back to March.
$3.21 unit price and add in the taxes and fees because that's included in the cost of the fuel. That number will quickly go up to almost $5 a gallon, but we were paying, or $4 a gallon. We were paying back in October of last year, $5.57 a gallon on average. So if you average it the entire year, if I include the last deliveries that we had in the month of April are, with the taxes included, our total price per gallon average is still $4.20 for this fiscal year, and we've been paying $3 on average in the last couple of months.
Chief, I understand. I understand about your position with regard to the vehicles running, operating, idling when they are on an emergency run, whether it be a fire or a rescue or whatever the case may be. That's one set of fuel usage, which nobody has an objection to paying for, obviously. My question is, does the department know how much fuel is being consumed doing the other runs that are non-emergency runs? And your answer was no.
Correct.
And you are familiar with the, the non-emergency runs that are being performed right throughout the city? Right?
I, that's, is that a question?
Yeah, that's a question.
I'm not familiar with what you're talking about, no.
Okay. So then the department doesn't keep track of any use of those vehicles that is not in emergency? The battalion chiefs in each station, whoever the superior is that is condoning or allowing these, the use of these vehicles, we don't, we don't have any knowledge of that?
The battalion chiefs are in charge of making sure that the vehicles adhere to the policies of the fire department. And policies, there's policies in the fire department that, that speak to the use of those vehicles at non-emergency scenes. And as long as the operators of those vehicles and those company officers are adhering to the department policies, then typically those type of incidents do not come up to the administration's attention, no.
So that you mentioned those department policies. Do those department policies also include the policies and directives from the Board of Public Safety to the fire department?
The Board of Public Safety approved those policies, yes.
But you said that the battalion chiefs approve, make those approvals of department policies. My question is, does that include the directives and the policies submitted to the fire department by the Board of Public Safety?
Excuse me, before you answer that, Chief, I'm going to ask you to identify yourself. And Councilman, we've given you some leeway, but you've, you've hit your, your time mark on the questioning of this topic, but I'm going to, please ask the Chief to reply to the Councilman's state, question and identify yourself before you do so.
Peter McMichael, Fire Chief. Councilman, matters pertaining to the operations of the fire department should be directed directly to the mayor's office, not to department heads. I would ask you to submit your comments or questions directly to the mayor's office.
Chief, it's interesting that you say that because I've asked you questions and you have sent me a reply that anything that is not on the agenda for the city council has got to go before the mayor. This is on the agenda for the city council. And the previous question, or one of the last questions I asked you, was also on the agenda for the city council. But I'm not getting the answers. Now you're saying to me, even though it's on the agenda for the city council, it's still going to go to the mayor. Is that, is that what you're telling me?
Chief Unbenhour has answered your questions, Councilman. Any questions pertaining to the operations, that they did the operations of the department, respectfully submit those to the mayor's office, please.
Sure thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Chief. Any questions, further questions, comments from members of this committee? Questions, comments from members of the council? Councilman Ricks.
One follow-up question. Is there any way that we could calculate the number of miles being put on different fire apparatus that do not relate to emergency runs? Any sort of breakdown where there's a distinction between miles for emergency runs versus miles for non-emergency runs?
Of course, there's a way to do that. My concern is it's a lot of effort being put in to some, to data, to creating data that means nothing. Because miles per gallon alone on a piece of fire apparatus does not tell you anything about this fuel usage. So I could calculate how many miles a truck goes into an emergency scene, but unless I know how long it was there, what type, what it was operating, what RPM it was operating at, at that fire scene and for how long, unless somebody has got the time during an emergency to write down all that information, that information really does us no good when we go to try to calculate the miles per gallon on a vehicle. So we just use an average.
And that makes sense. I wouldn't expect, you know, that level of great detail in reporting, but I do think that for statistical purposes, it could be helpful for us to get a general sense of whether, say, 95% of the mileage put on the vehicles is due to responding to scenes or if it's 90%, whatever the numbers may be, some general information like that may be helpful. And I imagine that this might come more from the manufacturer, but since these are different types of apparatus, I want to direct this question to you at this time. Do you have, or would you be able to find information on the amount of fuel that would be expected to be expended if one of the various apparatus were idling for a standard period of time, such as a one-hour period of time?
I'm sure if I looked at the manufacturer's manual for the specific engine that is in for idle in time, that would be pretty consistent since the, the actual weight that they're carrying is not inclusive of that. I could come up with a gallon per, you know, per, per hour usage, not per mile, but gallon per hour usage that we normally would expect out of that engine. But again, what, what RPM that engine is idling at has a lot to do with how much electronics in that truck at the time are running because most of these trucks have a significant amount of electronics in them, the lights, the sirens, the radios, all the other electronics that are built into emergency vehicles. How much of electronics is running when you're doing your idling test? It's probably very different than the manufacturer's test.
Oh, I can, I can certainly imagine. You know, if you were asked, going to ask me how much fuel was being expended in my own car for idling, I, I wouldn't know. Even for mileage, I wouldn't be able to give a precise number, but I would be able to give a general estimate. So I know every time I fill up my tank, I take a look at the miles versus how much I've driven, and usually it comes out to somewhere around 30. So I certainly wouldn't be looking for anything that's an overly precise number. But I think that's some general information on, you know, a ballpark number that, that could be helpful to answer some of the concerns that have been expressed to me and I imagine to some of my colleagues from members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Further questions from members of the council? Questions from members of the public? Questions from members of the public? Thank you, Chief. Next is bid 2024-017, animal shelter food and cat litter. This is found on page 103. I'm going to ask the director, identify with the department and title, and then Councilman Lattiser has the floor.
Ann Corvin, Animal Shelter Director?
Thank you. Councilman Lattiser.
Hi, Director.
Hello.
I don't have a problem with, with the bid itself, but my question is, why are we going to pay $100 delivery charge to have this material, this food delivered to the shelter when the vendor is literally, I think it's about four miles away from the shelter? Isn't there someone either in your department or DPW or, you know, someone who is running various errands that can pick this up and save the $100?
I've done it a couple of times myself with my personal vehicle when I can. I, I have to be honest, I really just don't have the time to do it consistently. And I cannot fit the whole order in my car at once. I don't know about other departments, if they have vehicles available. I think we talked about this before. I mean, I, you know, I, I don't know. I know, I know it's not something like animal control would be able to do, I don't believe, given just their, their trucks, the way they're situated and and the volume of calls that they may or may not have, they may get there, they may not get there, and I think that's the problem. When the manager was there, the last time this bid went out, he would use his own personal vehicle, pickup truck, and drop it off, but now that he's gone from that particular store, that's no longer an option.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any further questions from members of this committee? Questions from members of the council? Councilman Ricks.
I just wanted to briefly say thank you for coming. Thank you for answering the question and for really going above and beyond to make that kind of trip in your personal vehicle in the past. And I think that, you know, we, we all can appreciate that there are limits to what anyone can do in terms of going above and beyond, and at a certain point, yeah, have to pay the delivery fee under some of these circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further questions, comments from members of the, the council? Questions, comments from members of the public? Questions, comments from members of the public? Thank you. Next is item 14, bid 2023-438, replace doors and additional posts at Thayer Arena. This is found on page 106. This was requested by Councilman Lattiser. Christie, if you wouldn't mind, please identify yourself, department title and name.
Christie Moretti, Public Works Business Manager.
Thank you. Councilman Lattiser.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't, I don't have a question, it's just a comment. It seems as though practically every meeting, you know, things keep coming back to us for this particular facility. And I wonder if, you know, maybe it might be the time to hire an entity that can go in and do a complete analysis of this facility once and for all and give us, provide DPW with a game plan for taking care of things. You know, we just keep, you know, keep chipping away at this thing, meeting after meeting after meeting, and the dollars just continue to go up. Why not just hire an entity, go in there, do a full evaluation of this facility and make a recommendation to the city? Here's what you need to do, here's what it'll take, here's what it's worth, here's what it's not. That's, that's all I have to say on this. It just continues to come back to us every meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Questions, comments from members of this committee? Questions, comments from members of the council? Questions, comments from members of the public? Thank you. The next item is number 28, bid 2024-029, ADA improvements at crosswalks?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Solicitor.
So we, we, we looked into it. The first recommendation I'm going to have at this moment is to, for the committee to consider an amendment to their agenda. And the amendment is to correct the item number from 2024-029 to be 2024-027.
May I have a PCR?
PCR not needed at this moment.
So I apologize, a PCR is not needed?
Two steps. First item, we're going to amend the agenda to correct the, the agenda, then we're going to assign a, a PCR for it.
Got it, thank you. So to the members of the committee, I am making a motion to amend the bid number from
On the actual agenda.
On the actual agenda from 2024-027 to 2024-029.
The other way around.
That's what I knew I was messing up. I withdraw that amendment. That's why I was staring at you. All right. I'm making a, a motion to amend the agenda from bid 2024-029 to 2024-027.
Second.
ADA improvements at crosswalk. I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do I make a motion on the amendment to the agenda?
All right. Now we're going to pull the item off so that we can formally have the council do it. So assign a PCR to the new item.
May I have a PCR number, Madam Clerk? This is now 5223. And now we can have a discussion? Thank you. So for the record, bid 2024-027 will now be PCR 5223. But we will move on with discussion. The reason why I asked this to be pulled is because this, just for clarification, this is also part of the, the Ward's ARPA requests. And the first phase was getting the flashers for the crosswalks. The second phase is making them American With Disabilities Act legal, if you will. And this is part of that part. So Christie, if you wouldn't mind, identify yourself and there's a department?
Christie Moretti, Public Works.
So this is basically the final phase of this multi-phase that we've gone through on these four locations from Sandy Lane as well as, I believe, Strawberry Field.
So we're actually probably do it in reverse. We'll probably have the EDA improvements done first and then install the flashing pedestrian crosswalk signs, but yes, this is part and parcel, so they kind of go together.
Certainly. So we bitted, we put the bids out a little backwards, but we're now moving it forward. That's excellent. I want to thank your department for the effort put into, this is something that I know a lot of residents. We have in Ward III, there is a massive apartment complex there, the Sandy Lane Apartments. It's also where the ice arena, their ice rink is, the swimming pool is, the DPW, the Boys and Girls Club annex, that's at the Cooper Building, as well as the Strawberry Field where Lipid Elementary School is. So to have these lights, it's incredibly necessary, and I thank you because I think it was done in a very timely fashion from the requests and now. So thank you to you and your department and all those involved. Are there any questions, comments from members of the committee? Are there questions, comments from members of the council? Are there any comments, questions from members of the public? Members of the public?
Mr. Chairman?
Solicitor Welsh.
So the recommendation at this time is whatever the committee is looking to do to put an amendment on this item to reflect that the item's number has changed.
Because we made it to a PCR?
We still need to make the amendment to the, to the item. So if, if you can get a motion, then we'll
A motion to accept the, as amended, the bid number?
It would be in order if the committee wants to move
Favorable action.
With an amendment to correct the title from 029 to 027.
I'll make such a motion for favorable action on PCR 52-23. As 20, bid 2024-027, ADA improvements at crosswalk, favorable action?
Second.
Was that correctly done before I asked for a vote? Thank you. I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. Item number 29, bid 2023-455, purchase eight solar speed signs. This is found on page 195. Christie, before I hand it over to Councilman Foley, could you please just re-identify?
Christie Moretti, Public Works.
Thank you. Councilman Foley.
Quick question. Are these similar to the ones that are on Narragansett Parkway?
Yes, these are actually identical to the ones that the police department had purchased prior to this purchase. So they, they'll be able to communicate with them the same way they do the one that they have installed there.
Thank you.
That's how it's done. Thank you, Councilman. Any further questions from members of this committee? Questions, comments from members of the council? Questions, comments from members of the public? Questions, comments from members of the public? May I have a consent counsel? May I have a consent calendar vote, action, motion?
Favorable action?
Second.
I have a favorable, I have a favorable, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item, if I may ask for a motion for acceptance of the minutes for the meeting held on February 6th, 2023.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. If I may ask, Mr. Kaiser? The next item we'll be speaking to is PCR 24-23, formerly bid 2023-088, repairs to engine 13. If I could ask, what was the request by the department on this, please? Oh, I'm sorry, just please wait till the microphone.
The mayor's asked to hold that because he could not attend this evening.
And what would be the request of the administration for that hold?
For the next date in June, which would be June.
So the request
Chairman, we didn't hear what the request was, I'm sorry.
He requested to hold, the administration is requesting to hold until the June 5th meeting. So the mayor may be in attendance. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Is there a motion to be made on the request of the administration?
I move to hold till the June 5th meeting.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The time is now 6:03 and the Finance Committee is closed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next committee to meet
So the ordinance committee will convene at 6:08 PM. First item is acceptance of minutes from the committee meeting held on April 17th, 2023. Do we have a motion?
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have PCO 18-22 sub A. An ordinance penalizing owners or leases of vehicles used to carry materials to a place at which they are illegally dumped. This is Councilman Howe, Councilman Lattiser, Councilwoman Travis, and Councilman Foley. This would be second passage. Who's taking point? Councilman Foley? Sponsor requests favorable action. Again, this is second passage. Do any members of the committee have any questions or comments? Do any members of the council have any questions or comments? Do any members of the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have PCO 4-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 32, Article 2 of the City of Warwick Code of Ordinances to update standards and processes relative to the regulation of donation drop-off boxes. This is Councilman Howe and Councilman Ricks. This is second passage. And who's taking point here?
Respectfully request favorable action.
Councilman Howe respectfully requests favorable action. Again, this is second passage. Do any members of the committee have any questions or comments? Do any members of the council have any questions or comments? Do any members of the public have any questions or comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That appears to conclude ordinance committee at 6:10 PM. Or I lied to you and there's a second hidden page. Yep. So next, we have PCO 9-23, an ordinance to prohibit parking on the west side of Lauren Court on school days between 8:30 AM and 9:30 AM and between 2:30 PM and 3:30 PM. This is Councilman Lattiser. It would be second passage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Respectfully request favorable action on PCO 9-23.
Any questions or comments from members of the committee? Any questions or comments from members of the council? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
PCO 10-23, an ordinance to prohibit parking on the south side of Castle Rocks Road between 133 and 179 Castle Rocks Road. This is Councilman Gebhardt, and it would be second passage.
Respectfully ask for favorable action.
Any questions or comments from members of the committee? Any questions or comments from members of the council? Any questions or comments from members of the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have PCO 13-23, an ordinance amending Section 64-4 of the City of Warwick Code of Ordinances to provide regular city pay to city employees who utilize military time. This is Councilman Howe, and it would be first passage.
Thank you, Chairman. I respectfully request favorable action. Again, this is to clean up and to assist those who step up and serve the country to not miss out on their time of service within the City of Warwick as they go off and do their necessary training. As we know, the posture of the National Guard has changed over the last 20 years. It's definitely their responsibilities have increased. I think we all heard that there were pilots called up to go extinguish, assist with the fire departments to extinguish the fires over in East Greenwich. They're on 24-hour call and sometimes the time in service, if they get called up, does not count. And we're just trying to clean that up so that they are not punished or in any way disciplined or lose out on time in service because they take that extra responsibility and action under their belt. So I respectfully request favorable action. Thank you. Oh, and I'm sorry, Chairman, if I may say also, I apologize. This is in par with state and federal laws throughout the country, this ordinance. Thank you.
So it sounds like it brings us up the speed with you, Sarah. Any questions or comments from members of the committee? Councilman Ricks?
I do think that this is a good idea. It only seems right and fair. So I suppose that my question is that it does seem like something that should be part of the the contracts with the collective bargaining units. So I'm not sure if there are any provisions in the various contracts or that either are in accordance with the proposed legislation or contradict the proposed legislation since this would, this legislation is effectively changing into ordinance that's already currently in place.
This, that's a great question, and that actually was part of a, small part of the discussion. This is an ordinance thing, so it's not a contract, it's not a negotiating thing. This is something that the city puts forward that then honors. Any requests from here on out could be, but this is more of an ordinance issue. Seeing that the city is giving, offering this policy, from that perspective, it also kind of broad brushes. So therefore, it's not used as, for one department has more than the other department. This is a, the city saying, we support all those who step up in uniform, and here's the standard that we have in place.
I suppose that my follow-up question on that too would be that when persons are called up for duty under the National Guard, do they receive pay based on the days that they are serving in the National Guard?
There is, they receive pay from the National Guard if they are called up and activated. What this does is it's just like another column, if you will. Because what's happening now for members to get their time and credit towards retirement, time and credit towards pension to contribute, they're using vacation days. So what's happening is you have members who are not serving that are taking full advantage of their vacations by contractual obligation. And you have members who are in the National Guard that are getting called up for whatever the reason may be, whether it be to fly a helicopter over to dump water over a fire or whether it be a natural disaster or down to the border or as we have some deployed now overseas in Europe. They will then lose that time in service. So quite frankly, two young police officers, I'll use the police officers as an example, can go on the job at the age of 23 with the same qualifications. The one member who is not in the National Guard and serving our country will retire after 25 years of service, where it might take the National Guard member 30 years of service to retire with the same pension and time in service and pay.
So from my reading of this, the current ordinance before, that is the legislation in front of us today, I'm reading the relevant paragraph as stating, "City employees who utilize military time will receive," excuse me, the current draft, the current ordinance without looking at the new draft that's before us this evening. It currently reads, "City employees who utilize military time will not receive their regular city pay. However, benefits and time in service for pensions or seniority will not be interrupted." So
It's the donation of the money. It's the equal donation, the pay of the service member. So they will come back and owe money. They'll have to pay money because they are not receiving the pay. They, what this ordinance does is give them, I'm sorry, I'm just 12 or 14 days, I think it's 12, 12 days towards that time that they can choose anytime they want. Please keep in mind that members of the National Guard who are hired and serve, as we're all aware, they serve on the weekends and then they are required to do two weeks a month in the National Guard. Two weeks a year, one weekend a month. If they are a new recruit police officer or a new recruit firefighter or a new recruit DPW worker or even a library worker, they're usually scheduled during the weekends. So either way, they're, they have to sacrifice pay, so they have a decision. Do they give up the vacation time? What we are, what we are, as a city are doing now is bringing it up so that we do offer them then 12 they can choose. And then that can also count towards, they can use that money towards the payment towards their pension, the contribution towards their pension system.
And this is a situation where the content of the collective bargaining agreement, and indeed even the current ordinance, is irrelevant because federal law preempts both. We need to be brought into compliance with you, Sarah. So we're doing that.
So I suppose that, you know, my one real concern here, because I think that there may be a couple of different ways to accomplish the same objective. And I certainly agree with the objective that this legislation would seek to accomplish of not penalizing members of the National Guard for their service. So the one concern that I have is that if, as this legislation is written, that city employees who utilize military time will receive their regular city pay, then at the same time that those individuals are also receiving pay from the federal government or for their service in the National Guard, then it's effectively double compensation. But I suppose that my thought on that would be perhaps if instead of capping at only 12 days of military time, perhaps if there were no cap, someone could take unlimited military time and thereby not have to take any vacation days, not have to worry about running out of vacation days, certainly nothing like that. And perhaps there's a way with, I suppose, some more complicated language to recognize that the time in service for pensions and seniority shall not only not be interrupted, but that they shall get credit for any military time for purposes of calculating the pensions and seniority or the like. Because I can certainly see how that, that language of that it simply, quote, "will not be interrupted," quote, would not necessarily be sufficient. And then you could, I imagine, see those circumstances of someone having to effectively work for the city for 30 years instead of 25, which, that's not equitable. So I suppose that my suggestion would be perhaps there's a different way to, to frame this just to avoid the potential complication of double compensation. And I apologize for not bringing this up to your attention before the meeting. It was, I was initially looking at this and it seemed that the language here was a simple and elegant solution. But then a constituent was, was actually texting to me about this shortly before the meeting and I realized, gosh, I guess that it could be possible for there to be double compensation here.
I can only answer this, Councilman, is that, you know, we can't, I refuse to pull service of the military into the same as service to the city. The duties, the responsibilities, the challenges are totally different. I see it a little differently. It's not just a second job, it's not a part-time job. It is possibly a life-altering experience. And we, as the Councilman Sinapi said, we are just basically getting up to par and meeting the standard of the state and the federal government and other municipalities that will actually offer more of the days. We're the second-largest municipality. We are, the National Guard is having trouble recruiting members into their force. We are, the National Guard is having trouble recruiting members into their force, as is the military as a whole, and we're, we're coming short on some of our positions too, whether it be teachers, fire, police and workers. So we have to make sure that we're fair across the board and that we're on par. And, but this right here, this legislation is to ensure that, we do say we support what they're doing, because as I said, this is, the National Guard's posture has changed over the last 20 years. It is not your father's National Guard, and I'm not saying your personal father. This National Guard's job and responsibilities has grown extensively and the challenges have too, and we're just basically trying to keep. So I don't see it as a double dipping. I had someone, a constituent called me and said the same thing and I respectfully disagreed. I don't see it as double dipping. Thank you.
And given that, and every day that this goes undone invites litigation and you don't mess around with your Sarah because you lose, because it's extremely strict and very easy to win on as a result, I, I wouldn't be comfortable holding this at all and I wouldn't be comfortable modifying this on the fly, given that this was already done in part via legal counsel. So if any changes were to come to it, someone can by all means introduce at the docket session more changes to it and we can modify it further, but we don't want to be out of compliance with you, Sarah, for any longer than we need to be. It is, it's bad news. You don't mess with that federal law. Councilman McElroy?
Yeah, I do not look at this as double dipping. It's the same benefit that state employees get. If they do their annual two weeks, they get their two weeks military pay and they get leave with pay for military leave from the state. So I consider it the same as a benefit state workers get.
And Council President McAllister?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I concur with the chairman and Councilman McElroy on this and I, I do want to say that both the city solicitor and the council solicitor helped draft this. We held it at the last meeting to, to make sure that we were in compliance and everything like that. And, and I just want to thank Councilman Howe for, for identifying this issue, bringing it towards us. The Councilman also got a fiscal note, so we all know that there is minimal, if any impact, fiscal impact. And, and the way that the Councilman explained it to me when he docketed is these men and women are not only serving their city, they're serving their country and then they're going to be away from their families and then to come home, if they want to keep up for their time towards their pension, their pension time, they either have to use their vacation days or continue to work, to work longer. And that's, that's really not fair. We want to help individuals that want to serve our country. We also want to make sure that we are doing what the rest of the country and the state is doing as well. So I commend Councilman Howe for bringing this forward. I thank the council solicitor and the city solicitor for going over the language on this and I will be supporting this this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Any questions or comments from members of the council? Councilman Lattiser?
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, so basically you're making an amendment to an existing ordinance, right? The majority of this language is, is already here. And what you're doing is you're simply making the changes to eliminate our employees, whether it be fire, police, municipal, librarians, whatever, from having to utilize their vacation time while they are, for all intents and purposes, putting their lives on the line for each and every one of us. Correct?
Yes, sir, and their health care. I didn't mention that earlier, their co-pays on their health care. Yes, sir. Yes, Councilman?
Okay, yeah, I'm clear on this and I will be supporting it. Good job.
Thank you, Councilman.
Any other members of the council have any comments or questions? Councilman Ricks?
I do see the fiscal notes stating that there's an anticipated cost of approximately $24,000 per year. I don't have an issue with that, given the amount paid on the salary and benefits and given that that $24,000 would be to benefit our employees who are serving in the National Guard specifically and in compliance really with the state and federal policies there. I, I really don't see an issue there. I do want to just point out that so long as it remains the city's policy for only 12 days of military time, that's actually why it causes that amount fiscally to be so low, relatively speaking. Unfortunately, it wouldn't necessarily solve the time, solve the problem of those National Guard members having to dip into their vacation days or the like. But I do see this as at least a major step forward. And so for all of those reasons and based on this discussion, I think that yes, I would be comfortable supporting this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And Chairman, if I may, to wrap this up, just to give everyone a perception of what we're talking about here, 12 months a year to one weekend a month, so that's 24, plus the 14 days, that's 38. We're looking at 38 to 40, so days of service that they're required to give. And as I said, rookies that are coming on, who are usually the ones in the National Guard, they're going to give those days up. They have to work weekends, they have to work third shift, so it, or second shift, because that's where the young bucks start. So this is, 12 days is, is a small percentage of the 40 and more that they're obligated to give on regular scheduled time. So this is again, like the chairman said, so I want to thank you for the clarification and, uh, thank you, Chairman, and I respectfully request favorable action.
Any further comments from members of the council? Any comments or questions from members of the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move favorable action. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have PCO 14-23, an ordinance relative to repealing the alarm review panel, transferring responsibilities to the police department and increasing the false alarm assessment schedule. This is Councilman Gebhardt and Councilman Foley will be first passage.
Thank you, Chairman. Respectfully request favorable action on this. Councilman Foley and I have served on the alarm review panel for the last three years. The licensing department has an excellent handle on the false alarm assessment process. Apparently this panel was introduced at a time in the past, some may remember, when there were many, many, many violations and they were not being kept up with and there was no process for dealing with them, so the council felt the need to get involved. At this point, this is just an administrative task that they are well-equipped to handle within the police department. We've spoken with the chief, we've spoken with licensing. Everyone is comfortable with this change, actually more than comfortable, they are enthusiastically supportive of the change and request your support. Thank you.
Any questions or comments from members of the committee? Any questions or comments from members of the council? Council President McAllister?
Thank you very much and thank you, Councilman Gebhardt, for putting this forward. I've served on that committee for a number of years and I think it is well past its expiration date and I'm glad to see that we are moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ricks?
It's not every day that you see the legislative body giving up some of its authority, but in this case, it appears warranted. That's all.
Any further, Councilwoman Travis?
Thank you. I was one of the first people that went on that. There were so many alarms. I think I served over 10 years on it. And, but now, I mean, we did bring it up to where, but we made money with the, you know, we made good money with it, so. And the best part was people making them alert about having false alarms and the problems it could cause, especially when the policeman, the Russian to get somewhere and it's a false alarm and it could have been a serious accident on the way. But we did clean up all those. There were so many. So that's good now that we don't have to have that many. But I'm glad to see that we got to that point and that the police are going to take it over. Thank you.
Chairman, if I may?
Councilman Gebhardt?
Just to Councilwoman Travis's point, I just wanted to clarify for the, for the group here. Part of what we're doing here is actually increasing the fee schedule. There will be no change to the, the existing process, you know, so the, the police department will still be enforcing false alarms, they will still be assessing a penalty should someone have excessive false alarms, especially of the holdup type, which are especially disruptive to the, to the police department if they are in fact false. The, there's an educational component to this, a program that a business owner can enroll in to be, to have their initial fines waived. That program, which was rolled out in this initial legislation, you know, whenever this was put into effect, remains in, in effect. The, really the only change here is that the fines will no longer go through this panel to be assessed. We're simply deputizing the police department to assess those fines along with the schedule and sort of the methodology that's been well-crafted over the, you know, 20 or so years that this panel has been, been active. So, thank you.
Do any of the members of the council have any questions or comments? Any members of the public have any questions or comments? And it is notable that of the tiers of fees, only two of the four are going up and the discretion for the highest tier, instead of being with the review board, will now be switched to the municipal court. But even the tiers that are going up in price are very modest, from $75 to 100 and from 100 to 150. So it's pretty tame and it shouldn't break the bank for anyone, especially when you get up to three false alarms with no fee. So this should only really be hitting those who are frequent flyers, so to speak. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable action. Second.
Motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And now maybe ordinance will conclude at 6:35 PM?
The next committee is Public Safety and that can start at this time.
First order of business is acceptance of the minutes of the March 7th meeting. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable action.
Do we have a second?
Pardon me, I'm double-checking to make sure that that was not the meeting that I was abstaining from.
I'll second then, to make it easy. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, the first item is piece, consent calendar. The first item is acceptance of the minutes of the meeting held on April 3rd. Do we have a motion?
Favorable action.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
First, PCR 50-23, Joanne Capuano is the claim. The recommendation is to pay an amount of $329. Looking over the documentation, it's all in order. Any comments from members of the committee? Members of the council? Members of the public? Do we have a motion?
Move favorable action in the amount of $329.99.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Second is, I'm sorry. The claim for Roberta Cuna, the recommendation is denial. And there's numerous reasons for the denial. Any comments from members of the committee? Councilman Ricks?
I do see the recommendation memo with the numerous reasons. For example, the affidavit is not notarized, there is a lack of two estimates as to the tire damage in, beyond the sole invoice. I do however see an invoice for towing separate from the invoice for the damage to the tire. I would suggest that putting aside the storage fee that's part of the towing invoice, if that $35 is removed, that becomes $232.50. While that would tend to be more than I would pay for that type of a tow, it appears to have been reasonably necessary under the circumstances for a tow to have been done and it seems that this person was acting reasonably, calling up a tow company. So I would suggest that because we have the evidence that that tow was performed on the date in question, that it would be appropriate to have a favorable action in the amount of $232.50. However, because that is less than the maximum of $300, it seems most appropriate to send a notice to the claimant to advise them to come to the next meeting that this matter will be heard at in the event that the claimant, Roberta Cuna, is not present here this evening.
Thank you. Any comments from the council? Any comments from the public? So as per our previous actions, I'm looking for a motion to hold?
Move to hold to the next available date.
June 5th? Oh, what's the next PCR? Lynn, could you talk up just?
PCR 5323, Councilman.
5323? Thank you.
Chairman, can you just hold on one moment before taking a vote? I apologize. I just, I'm trying to pull it up. I'm confused on one item.
Is that Councilman Sinapi?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, sir. What was your comment?
If you could just hold the vote for just a moment, please, so I can verify one thing. Yeah, so as part of, because I assume the claimant will be reached out to, as part of that effort, could it please be brought to their attention that there should be a third estimate? Because I see two on the front.
I hear your, your request, I have no problem making that request to finance.
Yeah, to whomever, I apologize.
So that's fine, so...
Through the chair, if I may?
One moment. As a chair, my recommendation is to go along with the recommendation of the, of Earl, Mr. Earl, and deny for those reasons as stated. So in the past, when we know or believe to be denying a claim, we hold it. So in the meantime, finance should reach out to them and tell them why.
Agreed, I just want to, so maybe I'm not, wasn't following properly.
There has been no motion. Once I'm done with the council, the public, I will be making a motion to hold and notify the claimant that my record, the Chair's recommendation is to deny.
All right. Then I am on the same page then. I just want to make sure that, like you said, you can mention it to finance that way if it turns out the committee or the council recommends favorable action, that that way we then don't go back to her yet again and say, by the way, now you got to get a third estimate, as opposed to just getting it all done in one go, even if we end up denying, at least then she won't be going back and forth, back and forth.
Thank you. Counselman Ladifer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, just more of a comment. You know, we just continue on with these things, you know, meeting after meeting. It's not just in the claims, it's in other items as well where we don't get all the information that we should be getting. Some cases, we don't get any of the information that we should be getting. But to hold this, to have the claimant appear before us after all of the items that the Director of DPW has indicated disqualify this claim, to what point? Why are we going to continue to go through these motions when the claimants are not submitting the claims in the proper time? They're not submitting the documents they're supposed to submit in the proper time. The department head, in this case DPW, goes through all the motions and takes the time to review all these things, tells us that these are the reasons that we're denying this claim. The Director didn't say, I'm denying this claim because I don't think the pothole existed in the first place. He gave you a litany, you, us, he gave us a litany of reasons why he's denying the claim and that is based upon the ordinance that governs these claims. So what are we doing? We just approved another basketball hoop that a snowplow truck hit. Well, where was that basketball hoop? If that hoop is in the street where it doesn't belong, or on city property where it doesn't belong, why are we putting the blame on a snowplow driver for hitting something that shouldn't have been there in the first place and making the taxpayers pay the bill? This is like, this is just crazy that this is going on. So that's my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. I'm not going to address the basketball hoop, but this claim, I had a lengthy conversation with the council solicitor, with the council president, and what we have done is when we are recommending a denial, we in the past three years have held so that we can notify the claimant so that they can come if they want to add any new information. So last council meeting, after this committee did work on a claim, it was brought to the full floor and it was held on the floor because we weren't following a procedure that is not laid out in the ordinance, that has just been policy from this committee or this council. So what I have done is I've done my homework, I've done the research, I've reached out to people and I am following what is recommended to me so that this will be handled in a timely fashion and we will be following it step by step going forward. I had asked for clarification, I have gotten it and I am confident and assured that this is the way to do it. So are there any other comments from council? Yes, Counselman Ricks.
I'll just briefly add that from my experience and my understanding of how this committee approaches these claims, we require an invoice and two estimates, alternatively three estimates when it comes to damage to tires and the like, part of pothole damage. But when it comes to towing, that's a little bit different because we don't have the same concerns about towing as we do for tires. If a person calls up, calls up a tow truck and they get a bill, then the bill is what it is. Here, I would be comfortable approving certain line items on the towing invoice because that's set in stone. You can't ask someone to go back in time before an accident even happened and sign up for AAA. But when it comes to the estimates and invoice for repair of a tire, that's where a person actually does have the free choices and where we can require someone to go out and get estimates even after the work has already been done as, well, as burdensome and as unproductive as that may be, it's necessary to avoid some of the issues that have been a concern to this City Council in the past. I certainly understand that. So I wanted to just clarify as to that point, that I would be comfortable with approving for certain line items under the towing, but of course, I would not be comfortable approving for anything relating to the tire damage if the additional two estimates aren't provided along with the invoice that has been provided. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from Counselman Sanapi?
So to Counselman Ladifer's point, the reason why we have that process where we, when we deny or when we plan to deny is because Counselman Galucci used to bring it up all the time, that he didn't like that people have to sit in the audience for hours and hours on end, potentially for multiple meetings, just to get rubber stamped one way or another. Well, rubber stamped isn't fair because we do consider everything, but functionally from their perspective, when we have all the data and whatnot, to them, it likely comes off as a rubber stamp. Same with when we have all the reasons to deny, it's usually pretty straightforward. So I had requested a change and rather than an ordinance change, I believe the mayor at the time requested to go through a different route, basically by our policy instead, so that when we are going to deny it instead, it's just going to be held and then the claimant notified, so that way then they can come and attend a meeting when it's actually appropriate, as opposed to just wasting their time and adding insult to injury, especially when we're going to deny, or at least we plan to. If it's desired for it to be an ordinance, and frankly, it was always my preference, I'd be happy to do that, to change it formally in that way, but just wanted to let you know the background and frankly, what I'd prefer going forward anyway, but that's all.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Comments from the public? Comments from the public? As Chair, I'm making a motion to hold till June 8th. Do we have a second?
June 5th.
Second.
I'm sorry, June 5th? I'm sorry, 5th, right? My mistake. Held to June 5th. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next claim is for Marie Jackson. Again, this one was request, deny, was recommended to deny. Any comments from the committee? Counselman Ricks?
I do see the recommendation memo and the rationale for it. However, I believe that the concern as to the timely reporting of this is addressed in the documentation provided, as the date of loss here was March 30th and the invoice, I should note that it is an invoice, not an estimate, as otherwise noted in the packet. The invoice for $280.06 from Firestone is also dated March 30, 2023, the same date as the date of loss. So that addresses concerns relating to, as someone might say, mismatched dates. The lowest of the three estimates is $247.19. So given that the concern over the difference in the dates is resolved by looking at the invoice, I would suggest that it would be appropriate to approve in the amount of the lowest of the three estimates or invoices provided, which would be the $247.19.
Thank you. Any other comments from the committee? Comments from the council? Comments from the public? Do we have a motion?
Move favorable action in the amount of $247.19.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next claim is for, I'm sorry if I pronounce this incorrectly, Anahit Kazidian. This was recommended for approval in the amount of $118.85. Any comments from the committee? Counselman Ricks?
I'm not entirely sure why the recommendation memo had that particular amount. As I look through the packet of documentation, I do see a total of, I believe, three different types of services that were applicable here. The replacement of the hubcap, work on the wheel and the alignment. There were, there is the invoice from police that covers all of the above. It appears that there is one estimate as to the wheel, there are two estimates as to the hubcap and there are two estimates as to the alignment. If we add up the amounts that are the lowest of the three for each of the alignment and the hubcap, then we are already in excess of that minimum amount, or rather the cap, rather, of $300. Therefore, I would recommend favorable action in the amount of $300.
Thank you. Any other comments from the committee? From the council? Any comments from the public? Do we have a motion?
Move favorable action in the amount of $300.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next one is a recommendation to deny. Comments from the committee? This is for Julie Alina. Any comments from the council? Any comments from the public? Since we held the last one that was recommended for denial, I'm looking for a motion. I need a PCR, am I correct?
Oh, pardon me, Chairman, I meant to speak earlier.
If we, I'm sorry, Lynn, if we hold, do we need a PCR?
Yes, we do.
But before I do that, Counselman Ricks?
Thank you. So in this case, and pardon me for taking a minute there, I wanted to make sure to bring this up electronically too, so I have the packet in front of me. I was a little bit confused as to the rationale for the denial here. From what I am seeing, it appears that the person did properly submit their registration, they properly submitted the notarized affidavit and, let's see, the date of the incident is March 14th, the date of the affidavit is March 21st, so it is within the seven days, even though we have been lenient on that as in relation to COVID-19. And then going over this, I do see the invoice plus there are the two estimates for each of the tire and as to the rim. When all of those are added up, the lowest of each of those three, it gets to over the amount of $300. So seeing, unless I am missing something here.
Well, sir, if I may, the reason for the denial is that there is no evidence, specific location of the pothole, no photos, no police report. That's the information that is missing and for that reason, it was recommended denial. I'm looking to give it a PCR, hold it, and if that disclaimer can come forward with that information, then we'll reconsider. But the Chair is looking for a recommendation, a PCR and then a recommendation, hold, as we have done in previous denials.
Thank you. Looks like I may not have received that denial memo in the packet along with all of the other information. I'm not sure why a denial recommendation isn't in my packet, but hearing that explanation, yes, holding it seems like the best course of action here.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? From the public? So I need a PCR, Lynn, please. 5324? Yep. Thank you. So this is 5423. Get it back. The other one was 23. Oh, I'm sorry. So this is 5423. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. Thanks for catching me. So this now has a PCR, so I'm looking for a motion to hold till June 5th on PCR 5423 to claim for Julie Alina.
Move to hold.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman Foley?
Yeah, sure.
I respectfully request that we pause the Public Safety Committee. We're right about 7 o'clock right now, but what I would like to do before we start the council meeting is we have two items of note in the Intergovernmental and Appointments and I believe there are individuals from the public here for those, so I would like to have those committees meet first, then we will start the council meeting, we have a special guest here and then we can come back into committees after that. Does that work for you?
Works for me. Well, the Public Safety Committee is in recess.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I ask for the Intergovernmental Committee to start.
The first order of business is acceptance of the minutes from the committee meeting held on April 17, 2023. Do I hear a motion?
Move favorable action. Second.
Hear a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
The first item on the agenda is PCR 48-23, a resolution memorializing the General Assembly to enact legislation, amend in state law to provide eligibility for reimbursement for interest payments on approved school construction projects prior to project completion. Council President McAllister, on behalf of Mayor Pacozzi?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So before us this evening is a resolution that will ask the General Assembly to amend the way that RIDE reimburses cities and towns when they issue bonds to build new schools. So as you know, back in November, the residents of Warwick voted to build two schools for $350 million. We are working on that and, but before us this evening is what I believe would be a game changer, would be very helpful to the city of Warwick and to the state, any community that is looking to build a school, which would change the way the reimbursement is paid on interest. So the way the reimbursement is paid right now, if the city of Warwick were to issue the bonds to build these new schools, for a number of years, we'd have to come up with the interest payments in the city budget, the annual budget each year, millions of dollars to pay the interest. dollars to pay the interest, and then after four or five years, we'd get a balloon payment from the state reimbursing us for, for those interest payments. So, this would not cost the state any additional funding, it would just have them making payments earlier than they would. But that would be a game changer for the city of Warwick. To be able to change and get reimbursed as we go on these interest payments would really help the city of Warwick and every community looking to build schools. So, the city is looking to do everything possible. We are doing our homework on, on these bonds, and, and that is not before us at, at this evening, we're not talking about whether we're going to issue the bonds or not, but we want to have as many tools available to us. So, this would be one tool that I really do believe would be critical and, and a game changer for the city of Warwick, that if we can get reimbursed, if we issue bonds, and a pay-as-you-go period, it, it would be great. So, I know we have the Finance Director here this evening to speak on behalf of Mayor Pacozzi. We've talked about this together. The, the mayor is working with us on this, and I know that we have Director Schaefer here, so thank you for your time, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Director Schaefer?
Well, it is a, a unique situation here because we have a project, that's a long-term project. We have a, is that better? Oh, there we go.
Much better, thank you.
We have a project that's probably a three-year project, and the way it works is you don't get paid any, you don't, you don't get reimbursed by the state until you have project completion. And I've had communication with other communities who are in the same, we have another big one in East Providence, I was just communicating with the Finance Director in East Providence today, I've talked with the Johnston Finance Director, talked to Providence a little bit. They've all got some long-term projects, and the carrying charge of the interest, what happened is you're going to get a big balloon payment three years afterwards, but in terms of constructing the budget, where we have to pay all the interest each for two or three years before getting reimbursed, that doesn't make any sense to me, and it really is obstructive to our being able to proceed. So, we've had some communication with the Legislative Delegation. There's another bill that's already in that is, I would say, greedier. This just does one thing, and if, if we get a favorable action on this, we'll communicate with our Legislative Delegation. I know it's past the due date for generic legislation, but there is a bill in there, it takes our, stakes, stakes out our position on this. It will help other communities, and I think we'll get support from the League of Cities and Towns and from some of the other communities that would be positively affected. The, where I own the Department of Education, did a fiscal note internally, which they shared with some legislators, so if we did all $350 million upfront, we'd have $8 million of interest, we'd have to pay on our own for two or three years, depending upon the completion. Our financial advisor thinks that we'll probably do two tranches, say 150-plus million each time, two years apart, have enough money for the construction, and, you know, the series to complete the construction. So then you're still talking four or six million dollars, depending upon completion date, that we have to pay upfront. Then we'll get a balloon payment three or, three years later, but this is, this is trying to get rid of the cliff that we have here on this, and I don't know, it's true that it doesn't cost the state any money in nominal dollars, but it does mean the state will pay more money upfront, and that, that's probably the confining thing here, but I think we should proceed, there's no reason not to.
Any questions or comments from the committee?
So, just a comment and a request. The request is to be added as a cosponsor. The comment is, it seems like a no brainer for the state too, for the purposes of prudent budgeting, so they too can have this as a consistent line item as opposed to, just like we would have a, a cliff at the end. Even if they have to pay more upfront, it just makes more sense, there's no reason to kick the can other than optics, and it only hurts us as the municipality, so passage seems like a, a win-win for everybody.
I would also like to be added as a sponsor. Any, any other questions?
Add as a sponsor also.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Councilman Latteser?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would also like to be added as a sponsor regarding this particular piece of legislation. It doesn't mean I've changed my mind on the big picture, make that perfectly clear, because I have not. However, it doesn't make any sense to me at all that the taxpayers should have to front the money to pay for this interest over whatever years, three years, four years, whatever. And it seems odd to me that those taxpayers that are footing the bill for the next three or four years, waiting for the state to reimburse us, suppose they move out of the city, are they going to get a refund check from the city or the state? I don't think so. So, yes, I agree, I think this is a good piece of legislation. It's something that certainly should have been done a long time ago, but very grateful that it is being done now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Travis?
I also like to be added on as a cosponsor.
Thank you. Councilman Gabbard? Sparta? Councilman Ricks?
I'd like to be, to request to be added on as a cosponsor, and I would also just add that, although I know that some of the members of this council have different feelings about the schools, it's my opinion that this is something that's very important for the city, something that the voters approved, and I think that any legislation, whether here at the city level or at the level of the General Assembly, that helps us accomplish this goal, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would like also to be added as a cosponsor, I am in support of this legislation, and thank Peter for giving us the analysis you did and sending us the information. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions or comments from the public? Hear none, do I hear a motion?
Hello, my name is Darlene Netco, resident and homeowner taxpayer of Ward 7. Lifelong resident of Warwick, graduate of Warwick Public Schools. I currently teach at Tollgate High School. I've taught for 33 years in Warwick, have taught 35 years overall, and I'm president of the Warwick Teachers Union. And I agree that this is a very important piece of legislation, that you're passing this resolution to go to the state. I hope that the, the state concurs and that it gets passed, because, remember, the voters did pass this bond. The voters have spoken, they want these two new high schools. So whatever you need to do in order to get that done, please do it. This is on the heels of your previous resolution, asking to extend deadlines for the project to begin, that's great too. Whatever needs to be done, needs to be done, because I can't stress enough the need for these schools. I've, you know, been up here before speaking, the, you know, Pilgrim High School can't have any more electrical upgrades put in it. I teach in a room at Tollgate without windows, the temperature has gone up. I walked into that room today, it was about 100 degrees, and even with three air purifiers going, thanks to, you know, COVID, it's still stuffy and oppressive in there. So, we need new schools, not, not just for the sake of the students in the schools and education, but for the city as a whole. We know that new schools revitalize the community, will bring new residents in, will keep some of our students that might be opting for pathways in other districts or charter schools, and the, the point that these schools are very important for the city cannot be emphasized enough. And regarding paying interest on a bond, let's not forget that the Warwick Public Schools had to pay the interest on a bond for about 10 years, that it cost about 10, at least $10 million. The only city in the entire country that made its schools pay interest on a bond, Warwick. The only city back in 2010 that cut a full pot 5% maintenance of effort and never restored it. How much money have the schools lost?
Okay, excuse me, all we are deciding now is speaking on the merits on this resolution here, to change the interest.
Yep, I'm just giving a little history as to why perhaps it is very important that this resolution gets passed and that we get these schools built. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public? Councilman Sinapi?
So I can echo my former English teacher's statements about the state of Tollgate, both from my own personal experience and my siblings, and given how much this resolution would help, I'd move favorable action.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is now 7:13 and the Intergovernmental Committee is now adjourned.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to the committee for your support. The next committee is the Appointments Committee, and that can take place at this time. And then after the Appointments Committee, we will start the full council meeting, we do have some guests here this evening, so, thank you.
Good evening. The time is now 7:14, the Appointments Committee comes to order. First up is the acceptance of the minutes from the committee meeting held on April 17th. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Up this evening, we have two appointments for consideration. First is the appointment of John Smith to the Historic District Commission. This is a new appointment. You will find all the paperwork in your pocket for Mr. Smith. Do any members of the committee have any questions or, or comments on Mr. Smith's appointment? Members of the council? Any members of the public? Is Mr. Smith here? Ah, thank you for joining us. Would you like to say anything, sir? Yeah, no, no, no pressure. Hearing nothing from the committee, the council, or the public, do I have a motion?
Make a motion, favorable action.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to the Historic District Committee, Commission.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you for your service. And next up is a new appointment to the Wildlife and Conservation Commission, Ms. Kate Fitzpatrick. Is Kate in the, in the room? Given that this is a new appointment, and per our rules, I'm going to ask that we, well, let's, let's, let's ask if anyone has any questions or concerns on this one, and then if none, I would say that we hold this till our next meeting to make sure that Ms. Fitzpatrick can be here. Anyone from the committee have any questions or concerns on Ms. Fitzpatrick's appointment to the Wildlife and Conservation Commission?
Even if I did, I'd hold until she was here.
Okay. Anyone from the, from the, from the council? All right, so I will entertain a motion to hold at this point.
Make a motion to hold this appointment until January, oh, sorry, June 5th.
June 5th. Motion to hold made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And with that, we are complete on the Appointments Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I just want to give a second for the clerk to get settled, and I would like to start the council meeting. For people at home, we will do roll call, salute to the flag, general communications, we have a guest this, this evening from the American Lug Association, and then we will pause to go into executive session, then we'll finish committees, so. Good evening, everyone. I call the May 8th I call the May 8, 2023 City Council Meeting Order. The clerk will call the roll.
Mr. McAllister.
Here.
Mr. Foley. Mr. Gephardt. Mr. Howe.
Here.
Mr. Latessa.
Here.
Mr. McElroy.
Here.
Mr. Ricks.
Here.
Mr. Snappy.
Here.
Ms. Travis.
Here.
Nine present.
Thank you. At this time, I ask our guests from the American Lung Association to come to the podium here and lead us in the Pledge Allegiance, then we'll play the National Anthem, then I'll
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much. At this time, we're on General Communications, and I would like to introduce our special guests this evening. They represent the American Lung Association. This week, the second week in May, is Lung Cancer Action Week. So we thought it was a perfect time to bring our friends in here, and Dan and Danny, if you want to introduce yourselves, and we'd love to hear about the great work that the Association is doing, and then we have a citation to present to you.
Thank you so much. My name is Daniel Bowler. I'm the Executive Director for the American Lung Association in Rhode Island and Connecticut, and I'm here with my colleague, Dan.
Good evening. My name is Dan Fitzgerald. I serve as the Director of Advocacy and State Public Policy with the American Lung Association, and I lead our mission efforts in Rhode Island and Massachusetts. As you just heard, this week is Lung Cancer Action Week. So here at the American Lung Association, we have a very simple vision, and that's working towards a world free of lung disease. So ultimately, all of our work really falls into four main bucket areas. That is creating a tobacco-free future, it's working to champion clean air for all, ensuring folks have access to quality and affordable health care, and of course, defeating lung cancer. Unfortunately, we know that lung cancer is the number-one cancer killer of men and women. We also know that last year, about 940 Rhode Islanders were diagnosed with lung cancer, and we lost 480 Rhode Islanders to lung cancer last year. We know that the number-one leading cause of lung cancer is smoking, and the second-leading cause, and the first cause for those of non-smokers, is radon. We know radon is radioactive gas naturally occurring in our soil. Here in the city of Warwick, based on data from Rhode Island Department of Health, we estimate that it's roughly 1 in 3 homes may have an unsafe level of radon. Thankfully, it's really easy. To learn more, you can visit lung.org/radon. You can learn more, and we have a really easy test where you can test your own home for, for radon. So we encourage you to learn more about lung cancer, and Danny will tell you a little bit more about a couple ways to get involved.
Thank you, Dan. There are many ways to support our mission, one of which is local fundraising events. We have an event coming up on Saturday, June 24th, called the Lung Force Walk. It's specifically focused around lung cancer awareness, and as Dan said, lung cancer is the number-one cancer killer. So we really encourage you to spread the word about this event. It raises critical funds for our mission. It's family-friendly, pet-friendly, and it's a beautiful educational day at Roger Williams Park on June 24th, and you can learn more about it at lung.org/events. Thank you so much for having us tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and I do have a resolution from the mayor and the city council, and it reads, whereas the second week in May is designated as Lung Cancer Action Week, and whereas every 2 and 1/4 minutes, a person in the U.S. is diagnosed with lung cancer, and whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer deaths, and whereas lung cancer screening saves lives, and advocacy and increased awareness will result in more high-risk individuals getting screened, and whereas public support for research funding will result in new treatments and better methods of early detection, and whereas Lung Force is a national initiative led by the American Lung Association to defeat lung cancer. Now, thereby be it, we resolve that Warwick, R.I., hereby designates the second week in May as Lung Cancer Action Week throughout the city of Warwick, and encourages all residents of Warwick to learn more about lung cancer, risk factors, and early detection, and take action. This resolution shall take place officially tonight. So, thank you very much, and thank you for the work that you do for our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're still under General Communications. I do have a few announcements. I'd like to make announcements of the upcoming budget hearings. The time, the time of the budget public hearings will be on May 22nd, starting at 4:00 p.m., and May 23rd, starting at 4:00 p.m. as well. And then we are looking to have a vote on the budget on May 25th, also starting at 4:00 p.m. So that's a Monday and a Tuesday, and then a Thursday. I also want to make a note that there will be public comment, obviously during the public, the public hearings for the budget, but also on May 25th, the day that we could potentially be voting on the budget, there also will be public comment available before the council takes a vote. So that'll be Rule 41. We want to place that and give the public every opportunity to be heard on the budget. I also have one more acknowledgement that I would just like to make of how proud I was this past week of our, our fire department. We had over 50 off-duty firefighters who volunteered their time and their tools and, and their, you know, their own time to help a disabled veteran who has been unable to maintain his property. This, this is in Ward 7, where this happened. The individual has fallen on some hard times. He's, he's an older gentleman. He has lost his wife. He has some other health issues, and he just was unable to take care of his property. The fire department became aware of this. The union organized this cleanup on their own, and over 50 individuals came and helped out. I was blown away. I showed up with a case of water. I wasn't even close to how many people that they had there. Incredible work. If you go onto my Facebook page, you can see before and after pictures. It's unbelievable, and I think we should all be proud to be part of a community who comes together like that. This, this individual has come on some hard times. He served our country. He's part of our city, and, and these individuals, these men and women stepped up on their own to do this. So I just want to thank them publicly. West Bay Community Action is also working with this individual, so it doesn't get to this point again, that we, he has some resources available, and it's just a whole community coming together for one of our own. So I just want to thank all the men and women of the fire department who came together to do that. Are there any other council members, anything under General Communications? Councilman Howe?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to take this moment to extend an invite to my colleagues and to also welcome you to share this information. On this Saturday, May 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., the city of Warwick and the Rhode Island Military Organization will be hosting a boot camp breakfast. So I'm gonna take a moment and just explain what a boot camp breakfast is. It's basically where we are inviting all veteran services, the Providence VA, the Rhode Island Department of Veterans, and numerous employers, as well as New York Life, which will go there with financial strategies for veterans. We are just getting over a pandemic, and it seems, if you notice, that there's been an uptick in commercials from the Providence VA. A lot of veterans have disconnected, if you will. A lot of veterans that are qualified for ID cards have not gotten them yet. They have not enrolled in the VA. One of the most important things to enroll in the VA is, you may not need the services now, but 20, 30, 40 years down the road, when the certain items are diagnosed, I can tell you, the Gulf, as a Gulf War veteran, numerous items are now coming up. Diseases, different connections. I know during the Vietnam Veterans, Parkinson's was, is now rated as a result of Agent Orange. So it's good to get enrolled now, so therefore you're not doing it when you need that urgent care. So this will go on from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Annex Center, at the City Hall Annex, which is the Sawtooth Building. New York Life is graciously hosting breakfast. They will have caterers there to serve breakfast free of charge. Financial planning for our seniors, as well as financial strategies for our veterans, as well as our seniors. And some of the attendees, if you pardon me while I read from my little script here, some of the attendees will be the city of Warwick Personnel Department, Electric Boat, Rhode Island Department of Veterans Affairs, the Providence Veterans Administration, again, to help on the spot get veterans their earned ID cards. AAA, New York Life, as well as numerous nonprofits that are gonna be there, offering volunteer opportunities to people who are interested in, and of course, the Rhode Island Department of Labor and Training, to help. They're looking for people to fill the over 100 state jobs. So I encourage, please tell your constituents and who are veterans and seniors about this event. It's the first one we've had since 2019, pre-pandemic. So we're excited about it, and we look forward. Again, 9:00 to 1:00 at the City Hall Annex Building or the Sawtooth Building this Saturday, May 13th. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other, Councilwoman Travis?
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that this weekend was a very busy weekend throughout the city of Warwick. Rocky Point had their Spring Festival. They had between 200 and 300 vendors, and they had so many fun things for the kids. It was a real great event. Also on Saturday, the library had a Star Wars event that was very well-attended. Everybody dressed up in Star War. It was really good. And then yesterday, the Cemetery Commission, because it's a cemetery week, I believe, they did a real nice enactment of General Greene's cemetery, but he was all dressed up, you know, he came out to visit, he said, and he had his wife with him. But it was a real good, you know, presentation. I think they did an excellent job, but it shows that Warwick has been very active this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And if anybody hasn't had a chance to see all the work they've done at that cemetery park, the FOP, you can walk up the brand-new stairs that they put up. You can see all of Appinag, their signage. The Appinag Village Association worked with the city, and it is, it is beautiful up there. So thank you to the Cemeteries Commission for keeping that up as well. Any other, under General Communications, for members of the council? Okay, hearing none. At this time, I'd like the public safety to reconvene, and then we will go into executive session.
Good evening, everybody. The public safety reconvenes at 7:39. We left off with... There we are. The claim we are looking at is Rose Russo. The recommendation is to deny for numerous reasons. Any comments from the committee? Councilman Ricks?
I did not receive a copy of the recommendation memo. If you could clarify on the reasons for denial?
Any other comments from the committee? From the council? From the public? So as we have done all evening, I'm looking for a PCR to hold this till June 5th. I think it should be PCR 5523? I'm learning. So do I have a motion to hold till June 5th?
Move to hold to June 5th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is David Scorpio, and the recommendation originally was to deny. All I will point out is the dates, is that's the reason for the denial according to this. And I'm seeing on the affidavit to the Honorable Counsel and on the affidavit, the date is 4/3, which would have been in the timeliness for it. They're saying they did not receive it till 4/12. I would like to err on the side of the constituent, of the claimant. So any comments from the committee? Councilman Ricks?
I do see that the affidavit, although the first page of the two-page packet states that the claimant notified the city on April 3rd, and we do see the, the paperwork also dated April 3rd. On the second page, it is notarized as of April 9th. That could be if the, the form was not filled out correctly the first time, and then the claimant had to fill out the affidavit separately a second time. But putting aside even that potential issue, I would also point out that the claimant reports a date of incident of March 27th, and we have a diagnostics invoice that stated March 28th. So that aligns to the timeline. It shows credibility. It shows credibility as to the date of the incident. And so also for that reason, in addition to the reasons that the chair expressed, I don't have an issue with the timeliness. I see that there's an invoice as well as three estimates. Everything, no matter how you slice it, is over $300. So unless there seems to be a different reason, that hasn't been brought to my attention yet, I think that approval in the amount of $300 would be appropriate.
Any other comments from the committee? Comments from the council? Comments from the public? Comments from the public? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Move favorable action in the amount of $300.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And the last claim in front of us, let me get to it somewhere in here. Buried. Is... Someone talking to me? Elaine Veely, there's a recommendation to approve. Yes, I'm sorry.
Did you give that a PCR?
Which one?
Scorpio. You just held that one as well?
We approved Scorpio.
We approved Scorpio.
In the amount of...
All right. Am I back being good? All right, so now we're looking at Elaine Veely, which is recommended to approve in the amount of $300. Evidence seems to be in order. Any comments from the committee? Any comments from the council? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Move favorable action in the amount of $300.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Back to the regular docket in the first order of business is PCR 31-23 Angela Toljen. My first thing is Angela here tonight? I do not see any hands in the audience. As the chair, I am looking to move this directly to the floor. The committee has already acted on this claim. It was held at the floor level and for that reason, I'm making a motion to move to the floor. Do I have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The Public Safety Committee... I did that. That was the very first one. Give me a second. Yeah, well, I'm sorry. Councilman McElroy is pointing out something. I thought I dealt with it, but the claim... The claim for Joanne Capuano. Do you have notes on that for me? That was the basketball. That was a favorable, seconded and voted. Yeah, that was dealt with. Thank you. Thank you for calling me. I have no problem with that at all. And the recommendation was for the amount of $329.99. Okay?
$329.99.
Yep, thank you. The Public Safety Committee adjourns at 7:46.
The last committee this evening is the Public Properties Committee and is in order to begin now.
Who's in? Randy. Councilman Gebhardt. And what committee is this? I had it. Yeah, 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 yeah. No, he wasn't. I'm...
The City Council Committee on Public Properties, Land Use and Community Affairs comes to order at 7:47 p.m. First, acceptance of the minutes from April 17, 2023. Do we have a motion?
Move favorable?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
One item on the agenda for second passage, this is Councilman Gebhardt. PCO 11-23, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the City of Warwick, JMR Properties, Inc., petitioner, Assessors Platt, 220, Lot 95, 5 Williams Street. Councilman, do you have a recommendation?
Aside from some members of the public that we heard from at our last meeting, who I believe had their concerns addressed, I have not heard from any others who have concerns. And I don't have any residual concerns at this point, so I would suggest we pass this favorably.
Do we have any discussion from members of the committee? Any discussion from members of the council? Any comments or questions from members of the public on this item? Hearing none, do we have a motion for second passage?
Move favorable action.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The committee adjourns at 7:48 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening again, everyone. We are now back in the full city council meeting. We have done roll call, salute to the flag and general communications and heard from the American Lung Association. Solicitor Walsh?
Prior to the motion to convene, is there any abstentions, recusals need to be filed on any matter that will be pending before the executive session of the council?
Yes, so I have presented to the council solicitor and the presiding officer, that is City Council President McAllister, that I am formally recusing myself from the matter entitled Restitution for Healthcare Premiums, Stephen Marola, for the reasons stated in that memorandum and therefore I'll read the bottom section of the notice, or rather the statement. Subsection A, in compliance with Rhode Island General Laws, Section 361461, I hereby recuse myself from participating in the discussion of or taking official action relating to said matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item then would be a motion to convene into executive session pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws 42465A2.
Councilwoman Travis, will you make that motion to move to executive session?
Regarding pending potential litigation, Boeing Securities fraud class action litigation and restitution for retiree healthcare premiums, Stephen Marola, as well as pursuant to 42465A3 regarding matters of security, City of Warwick Cyber Security Posture and Overview Briefing.
I make a motion that we adjourn to executive session for all those reasons.
Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Foley. Roll call. The clerk will call the roll for favorable action to move into executive session. Yes.
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 Epstein.
Yes.
Thank you. The city council is now in executive session.
...
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We are now back in the full council meeting. If you're watching from home, we have done roll call, salute to the flag, general communications, acceptance of the minutes, and now I'm going to go to Solicitor Walsh.
The Warwick City Council convened an executive session pursuant to forty-six, excuse me, forty-two, forty-six, five A two regarding pending potential litigation, the Boeing Securities fraud class action litigation, and restitution for retiree healthcare premium Stephen Marola. It also convened in an executive session regarding matters of security under forty-two, forty-six, five A three, and that was pertaining to the city of Warwick's cybersecurity posture and overview briefing. There were two votes taken, one of which was a unanimous motion with one, with Councilman Rick abstaining, abstaining to return to open session. It would now be in order to entertain a motion to seal the executive session minutes.
Councilwoman Travis.
I make a motion that we seal the minutes.
Second by Councilman Lattiser, Councilman Gephardt. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're going to do a roll call on that. Can I have a, the clerk will call the roll to seal the minutes.
Counselor?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Mr. Rick?
Abstain.
Sorry.
All right, we are now on number one on the agenda this evening. It's announcements of appointments. Councilman Gephardt.
All right. First up is to the Board of Public Safety, James Palucci. Second is to the Planning Board, Alfred North. Third is to the Warwick Housing Authority, William Fasenti.
Thank you. Number two this evening is appointments requiring confirmation. Committee report, appointments.
First up to the Historic District Commission was John F. Smith. Committee recommends favorable action.
For action, Councilman Foley.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Lattiser. Any questions or comments on this appointment that were not asked earlier this evening? So it's been moved in second, so the clerk will call the roll for favorable action for John Smith.
Mr. Counselor?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Rick?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes.
Thank you. The next appointment, Councilman Gephardt.
Next up was to the Wildlife and Conservation Commission, Kate Fitzpatrick. As Ms. Fitzpatrick was unable to attend this evening, we held this till June 5th.
Hold to June 5th. We are now moving on to the consent calendar. Number one is PCR forty-nine dash twenty-three, resolution relative to bids. Committee report, finance.
Favorable action.
For action, Councilman Howe.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Lattiser. Go ahead, Councilman Howe.
Thank you. Bid twenty-twenty-three, three-nine-five, twenty-twenty-three, four-three-nine, twenty-twenty-three, four-one-two, twenty-twenty-four, zero-three-one alpha. Twenty-twenty-four, zero-three-one bravo, twenty-twenty-three, four-four-two, twenty-twenty-three, four-zero-seven, twenty-twenty-three, three-three-eight, twenty-twenty-three, four-four-four, twenty-twenty-four, zero-two-five, twenty-twenty-four, zero-one-five, twenty-twenty-two, two-eight-six bravo, twenty-twenty-four, zero-one-seven, twenty-twenty-three, four-three-eight, twenty-twenty-three, four-one-nine, twenty-twenty-four, zero-zero-nine delta, twenty-twenty-four, zero-two-four, twenty-twenty-three, four-one-seven, twenty-twenty-three, zero-seven-three, twenty-twenty-four, zero-two-one, twenty-twenty-four, zero-two-two, twenty-twenty-four, zero-two-three, twenty-twenty-four, zero-two-six, twenty-twenty-three, four-three-two, twenty-twenty-three, four-two-zero, twenty-twenty-two, three-eight-nine, twenty-twenty-four, zero-two-eight, twenty-twenty-three, four-five-five, twenty-twenty-three, four-five-four, twenty-twenty-three, four-five-zero, twenty-twenty-three, four-five-three.
And that concludes the bid package, Mr. President.
Are there any questions or comments on PCR forty-nine dash twenty-three that were not asked earlier this evening?
Mr. President, I apologize. There was one more item. I apologize. Twenty-twenty-three, four-four-one, that concludes the consent calendar for the budget finance.
Okay. Are there any additional questions or comments that were not asked earlier this evening in the Finance Committee? Number two, under the consent count, is PCR fifty-dash-twenty, resolution relative to claims. Committee report, public safety.
Recommend favorable action.
For action, Councilman Foley.
Favorable action on the following claims.
I would just get a second, second by Councilman Howe and Councilman McElroy. Go ahead, Councilman Foley.
No problem. Joanne Capiuano, favorable action in the amount of three-hundred-twenty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Marie Jackson, approve in the amount of two-hundred-forty-seven dollars and nineteen cents. And again, I apologize if I mispronounce this name. Inahit Kazadian, approval in the amount of three-hundred dollars. David Scorpio, approval in the amount of three-hundred dollars. And Elaine Vili, approve in the amount of three-hundred dollars. There were a few that were pulled with PCRs.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on the public safeties resolution at this time? Okay. Hearing none. It's been moved in second. The clerk will call the roll for favorable action on the consent calendar.
Mr. Counselor?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Rick?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, consent passes.
Thank you, the consent passes. I believe there's one item that's been taken off the Finance Committee. Committee report, Councilman Howe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I may be referring to the solicitor for this. It is former bid zero-two-four, zero-two-seven, is now PCR fifty-two, twenty-three, improvements at crosswalks. This was moved, favorable action.
Solicitor.
It was originally appearing on the docket as bid twenty-twenty-four, zero-two-nine. It became a PCR fifty-two, twenty-three, in order for us to correct the agenda item, which it would be in order for, once moved in second, an amendment to change, to correct the bid number from zero-two-nine to become zero-two-seven.
So make that motion, Councilman Howe, that amendment?
Move favorable action, move favorable action on the amendment.
Second by Councilman Foley. Any questions or comments on this?
On the amendment.
Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll for favorable action on the amendment.
Mr. Counselor?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Rick?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes to amend.
Thank you. Councilman Howe.
Move favorable action on PCR fifty-two dash twenty-three as amended.
Second by Councilman Foley. Any questions or comments on this? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll for favorable action as amended.
Mr. McAlister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Rick?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, motion passes as amended.
Thank you, motion passes. I believe a few have been taken off the claims consent calendar. Councilman Foley.
Thank you. The first one is for Roberta Cuna, PCR fifty-three, twenty-three, hold till six-five.
Hold till June 5th.
Next one is for Julie Nina, PCR fifty-four, twenty-three, hold till six-five.
Hold till June 5th.
The next one is for Rose Russo, PCR fifty-five, twenty-three, hold to June 5th.
Hold to June 5th.
That's it. That concludes.
Thank you. We are now moving to unfinished business. Number one is PCO eighteen dash twenty-two sub-A. Committee report, ordinance.
Committee recommends favorable action.
For action, Councilman Howe.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Lattiser, Councilwoman Travis. Any questions or comments on PCO eighteen dash twenty-two sub-A that were not asked earlier this evening in the ordinance committee? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll for favorable action for second passage.
Mr. Counselor?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Rick?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, second passage.
Thank you, second passage. Number two this evening is PCO four dash twenty-three. Committee report, ordinance. For action, Councilman Howe.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Lattiser and Councilman Gephardt. Any questions or comments on PCO four dash twenty-three for second passage? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll for favorable action.
Mr. Counselor?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Rick?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, second passage.
Second passage, thank you. Number three this evening is PCO nine dash twenty-three. Committee report, ordinance. For action, Councilman Lattiser. Move favorable action on PCO nine dash twenty-three. Second by Councilwoman Travis and Councilman Howe. Any questions or comments that were not asked earlier this evening in the ordinance committee? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll for favorable action.
Mr. Counselor?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Rick?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, second passage.
Second passage, thank you. Number four this evening is PCO ten dash twenty-three. Committee report, ordinance. For action, Councilman Gephardt.
Favorable action.
Second by Councilman Howe. Any questions or comments on PCO ten dash twenty-three that were not asked earlier this evening in committee? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll for favorable action.
Mr. Counselor?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Rick?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, second passage.
Thank you, second passage. Number five this evening is PCO eleven dash twenty-three. This is also for second passage. Committee report, land use. Request favorable action. For action, Councilman Gephardt.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Foley. Any questions or comments that were not asked earlier this evening in committee? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll for favorable action.
Mr. Counselor?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Rick?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, second passage.
Second passage. Number six this evening is PCO thirteen dash twenty-three. Committee report, ordinance.
Committee recommends favorable action.
For action, Councilman Howe.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Foley, Councilman Ricks, Councilman Lattiser, Councilwoman Travis. Any questions or comments on PCO thirteen dash twenty-three? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll for favorable action.
Mr. Counselor?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Rick?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, first passage.
First passage. Great work, Councilman.
Thank you.
Number seven this evening is PCO twenty-four dash twenty-three. This is going to be held until June 5th. Number eight this evening is PCR thirty-one dash twenty-three. Committee report, public safety.
The committee had recommended at the last city council meeting, favorable action on this.
So we'll make that as a motion for favorable. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Ricks, Councilman Howe. Any questions or comments on this claim? Councilman Snappy.
Just to point out, the goal was for estimates to be submitted, and it appears estimates were in fact submitted, so I have no issues going forward.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? What's the amount on this?
Three hundred.
Three hundred? Three hundred dollars is the amount. Thank you. Any other additional questions or comments? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAlister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Rick?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, motion passes.
Thank you, motion passes. We are now moving on to new business on the agenda. First up is PCO fourteen dash twenty-three. Committee report, ordinance.
Committee recommends favorable action.
For action, Councilman Gephardt.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilman Foley, Councilman Howe. Any questions or comments that were not asked earlier this evening in committee? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAlister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Rick?
Yes.
Mr. Snappy?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, first passage.
Thank you, first passage. Thank you, first passage. Number two this evening is PCR forty-eight dash twenty-three. Would like to note that the entire council has asked to be cosponsors on this. Committee report, intergovernmental.
Request favorable action.
Councilwoman Travis, could you move that for me, please?
Which one are we talking about?
PCO, PCR forty-eight dash twenty-three, the resolution to the General Assembly.
I've got the wrong docket. I move favorable action on PCR forty-three, you said?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, twenty-three.
Thank you. Second by Councilman Lattiser, Councilman Gettard, Councilman Howe, Councilman McElroy, and Councilman Foley. Any questions or comments that were not asked earlier this evening in committee? Hearing none. The clerk will call a roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAlister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gettard?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Sinapi?
Yes.
Ms. Travis?
Yes.
Nine yes, motion passes.
Thank you, motion passes. Now moving to referral and advertising, PCO fifteen dash twenty-three, in ordinance amending the zoning of the city of Warwick, nine-eight-nine Centerville. We're now moving to unanimous consent. We have one item, which is PCR fifty-one dash twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contingency legal, fee legal retainer agreement for litigation regarding the Boeing Company securities fraud class action litigation. So this was under unanimous consent. So first, is there any objections from any member of the council to hear PCR fifty-one dash twenty-three at this time? Is there any objections? Okay, seeing that there is no objections, we will now hear PCR fifty-one dash twenty-three. I am looking for a motion. Councilman Gettard.
Move favorable action.
Second by Councilwoman Travis. Councilman Howe and Councilman Foley. Any questions or comments on PCR fifty-one dash twenty-three? And this was not heard in committee, so is there any members of the public that would like to be heard on PCR fifty-one dash twenty-three? Are there any members of the public that would like to be heard on this item? Okay, seeing none. It has been moved in its second, so the clerk will call a roll for favorable action.
Mr. McAlister?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Gettard?
Yes.
Mr. Howe?
Yes.
Mr. Lattiser?
Yes.
Mr. McElroy?
Yes.
Mr. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Sinapi?
Yes. Yes.
Nine yes, motion passes.
Thank you, motion passes. Ward one, anything to docket under unanimous consent?
I have a, no.
Ward two.
Pass.
Ward three.
Two items, Mr. President. Under unanimous consent, yes. Resolution relative to transfers, supplement appropriations, and emergency appropriations?
You can do it on the regular docket session.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ward four.
Pass.
Ward five. Ward six.
Pass.
Ward seven passes. Ward eight. Ward nine.
Pass.
Councilwoman Travis.
If there be no further business of this honorable body, I move to a docket session.
All is in favor of moving to docket session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are now in the docket session. Ward one, anything to docket?
I'm sorry, I'm getting, I know, but there's a question here from Councilman Howe.
I apologize, Mr. President, to my colleagues. It just says on it unanimous consent on the, the contents is under unanimous consent. I just want to make sure I'm doing the process correctly in a timely fashion.
We're in the docket session. Are the items, the transfers and the budget?
Yeah.
Yes, and the adapt in the, adapting the tax rate.
We would traditionally assign those to the Finance Committee, which would meet five minutes before the public hearing and then refer it out.
Okay.
So it's in order for docketing here at this time, it doesn't need to be under unanimous consent.
Thank you. So ward one, anything to docket?
Yes.
Okay.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a lease extension with the House of Hope Community Development Corporation.
Public properties.
Public properties. Ward two, anything to docket?
Pass.
Ward three.
Two things, Mr. President. The first one, a resolution adopting and setting the tax rate for the city of Warwick for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024.
Finance.
Thank you. Second item, Mr. President, is a resolution relative to transfers, supplemental appropriations, and emergency appropriations.
Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ward four.
Pass.
Ward five. Ward six.
Pass.
Ward seven passes. Ward eight.
Ordinance regarding requirements for claims against the city that are handled by city council.
Ordinance committee. Ward nine, pass. And we are adjourned. We will see you for budget hearings, and happy Mother's Day to everyone.
Thank you. Same to you, your wife's. And you pass out that to mine, too.